We'll call as we need order. You rise for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As a reminder, as I look at my phone, could you please make sure that your phones are silent? And if you're still living the age of pagers, thank you for the assist down there. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes of our previous meeting? Are there any corrections that need to be made?
I move to approve motion selection.
Okay, the motion is approved. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any questions? All those in favor must say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Six ayes. I also wanted to excuse Councilman Wolf. He's ill tonight. We hope to wish him have a speedy recovery. Uh, mail? Anybody have any mail? I did receive a letter from the Archbishop of Indianapolis. I thought I'd read it. Pertains specifically to our recent status of being the poorest county in Indiana. It says, "Dear Mr. Wentz, please accept my best wishes for joy and peace at the beginning of a new year. I recently learned that Fayette County has been identified as the poorest county in the state of Indiana. This determination must be a source of concern for you and your colleagues on the county council as well as the citizens you serve. I would like to express my personal solidarity and the support of the Catholic Archdiocese of Indianapolis for all efforts aimed at alleviating the suffering of the poor. I share your concern and wish to convey my willingness to help. I have spoken with Father Dustin Bame, the pastor of St. Gabriel Church in Conner'sville. He assures me that he and the members of the parish are ready to do their part. The Catholic Archdiocese of Indianapolis and the parish of St. Gabriel will continue to reach out to help alleviate the immediate needs of those who struggle to make ends meet. We stand ready to assist in other ways you may suggest. I hope to convey the same message to Mayor Leonard Irwin, the city council, and the county commissioners, and assure them of our concern and willingness to help. May our loving God show us how to address the great challenges of helping the citizens of Fayette County. Sincerely yours in Christ, Joseph W. Tobin, Archbishop of Indianapolis." It was very nice to get that from the Archbishop. I appreciate that. We may be contacting him for some sort of help or relief for some more citizens of Fayette County. I know the commissioner's got the same letter too and so forth. County attorney?
The surtax, wheel tax amendment we did in December, uh, there was a clerical error on there. It was supposed to include a new surtax for motor-driven cycles, um, but that has to be taxed the same rate as all other vehicles that have a surtax. So I prepared an amended version, which imposes a $25 tax for passenger vehicles, motorcycles, trucks, that are declared weight, but does not exceed 11,000 pounds, and motor-driven cycles. Before, we had it prepared for, for the motor-driven cycles, it'll only be taxed at $10, but all, according to the statute, all vehicles under that section have to be taxed the same amount. We were informed by the Bureau of Motor Vehicles of this error.
Okay. So we're all good now?
Well, you guys still have to adopt the new, work the corrected ordinance.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for our attorney, or does anyone want to make a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Chris, have you got, you've got a copy of the amended ordinance?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, so we're good now on that?
Well, we just have to resubmit it along with other form to the commissioner of the MD, but it still needs your approval.
The ordinance, 2015-05.
We amended the wrong ordinance first time around, didn't we?
Um, well, there, that, there was just a, and there was an error of the amount of tax charged. Cause the whole, they rewrote the code where you could include a surtax on motor-driven cycles. And through an error on behalf of myself, um, I thought that you were supposed to tax that at $10, but you have to, that's just what the state does. The county has to tax it at the same level that they tax the other vehicles in that subsection.
Okay. I'm clear. We got a number for this order?
2015-05.
Hey, I move to approve ordinance number 2015-05.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Nays, habits, six, nothing.
And besides that, I don't have anything to present unless someone has a question or concern that needs to be answered by me.
That was your one mistake for the year. You've got a close to rest of the year without making any.
I know.
I don't think any of us will do it though, Chris.
That air is human.
Yeah, we're, I make a lot of them. Thank you. Commissioner representative?
Good evening. Did, I'm assuming you all got your information on our facilities tour?
Okay. Yes.
Do you have any questions? If not, I've got a little explanation there, but do you have any questions up front that I can answer for you?
One question I got, that's the shower room in jail. Does it look like that picture in the scene, was that stainless?
I'm sorry?
Was that stainless steel on that ceiling? Wasn't that what was repaired just about last year or two?
Some of it was, yeah. Yes, some of it was. The, the problem obviously is, uh, if you vent that, you've got a direct access to the outside. So, I talked to Bill Gray today without going into a lot of detail. I think there might be a way we can address that, and I'd ask the sheriff for his permission to go ahead and pursue it, at least the possibility of it. The idea is, number one, find if we can vent it, then we'll address the existing problems with the metal where it needs to be sandblasted, painted, replaced, whatever. So it'll be a, an incremental approach to the solution. And if you're asking me for a dollar figure right now, I couldn't tell it was $10, or $10,000, or $100,000. I don't have any idea. You are gonna have to obviously go through concrete, but, uh, and you'll have to provide security precautions for that, both out and in. But, uh, I, I think we at least have a possibility for it. It won't be something that will happen in the next couple of months, I can assure you that. But, uh, that's, that's the plan.
Are there four little showers?
No, there are, there are eight blocks plus a shower in the intake area. And that's, I'm sorry.
Are all them in the same condition, basically?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
The shower, the shower and intake area is for the padded cell, and there are three, three additional holding cells back there. So that shower, those, those holding cells and the padded cell, they have commotes and basins, but they don't have showers. So that holding, holding area shower, bookend shower, is used for anyone that's being held back in that area. So with the population they have, then, it's, it's going to be used daily. So if, if we're going to address the other problems, we might as well go ahead and address that one too, as a preventative, preventative type of measure. And, does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. As to the annex, you've seen the one quote from, from the elevator company for $106,000. Here's my suggestion. We can address handicapped accessibility to the main floor. When you come off, come in off of Central Avenue entrance, you have those few steps that go up to probation. Bill McDaniel approached me and said, if we use his old office, which is on the main entrance, back in the corner where Nancy Stevens' office was years ago, that probation can come to the clients there, that will satisfy the ADA requirements. However, as long as we have it upstairs, and we have that occupied, we have to have that elevator. No ifs, ands, or buts, as I understand the ADA requirements. So the plan is tentative play, to research and look into putting Adrian on the building that was built years ago, up on the county farm, and put him up there. There would be an expenditure of monies, but I don't think we're gonna have anything near $106,000 in unanticipated costs. Uh, I went up there with Mrs. King a week or so ago. The only thing that's up there now, it's storage for a highway department, and their, their sign, sign-making room and equipment is up there. So, uh, the idea is to move him up there, that would vacate the second floor, and we have no more ADA requirements we have to comply with, with the annex. So if you saw some of the pictures, you saw some of the water damage area, we've either got gutters backed up and/or a roof problem that we'll have to address at some time in the future. So I'm letting you know what we're thinking about. No concrete step that I made, we haven't had anybody come in to give us a guesstimate. I am meeting with Adrian tomorrow to discuss with him what he wants to do, uh, but we're a long way from getting anything done, but I'd like to move quickly so we don't have any, any ADA compliance problems as far as the elevator. Questions?
Commissioner?
Sir?
After you guys did your tour of facilities, did you identify any particular situation that is, needs to be put up front?
Critical?
Yeah, right now.
Yes, there, there was a problem. Without going into detail, I explained some of it in the letter I gave you. The sheriff's department had a problem with their controls. We did approve a contract with Stanley. He originally approached us with a $30,000 quote, which we approved. However, the sheriff has cut about $11,000 out of that, so that it's only, we're only looking in the $19,000 area. That was the, off the top of my head, that's the only thing that I think that, that needed to be addressed right now. Everything else is either repair or preventative, preventative type of stuff. There are some things in the jail that need to be replaced that are security things, not, not a humongous amount of money. The only facilities we didn't go to was Community Corrections and the Highway Department. Highway Department's obvious, cause they're building a new building. Community Corrections, uh, I've been in it myself a few times recently, and it's in top-notch shape as far as I know. So, uh, that's...
So the jail control room, that the problems associated with the jail control room is the thing you really need to put on the front bar?
Yes. Those controls were, I got the grants and stuff for that in my last year, the last half of my last year in office. It's my fact, they, they put those in in January of Billy's first year in office, so they're eight years old. And, uh, it's like me, the older I get, the more I deteriorate. So, and when you're talking about anything mechanical or software pertaining to software, it has to be replaced or maintained on a regular basis. So I think they've gotten their, their money's worked out of that. But that's the only thing I can think of off the top of my head that, that was critical that needed to be addressed.
Reason I asked is after I had read your report and looked at the pictures, my, my first thought was, I don't think we're gonna be able to do all these things at once.
No. We're not, we're not going to do them at once. What we wanna do is prioritize things, do them as we have the money, and, uh, we may just have to bite our tongue and, and realize that we don't have the money for some things. We want, we wanna do a, a slow, sure type of approach to, it's not a get it all done and we'll worry about the money later. We wanna do it as we have the money, wanna do it in a, in a conservative manner, cautious approach, but that, that would require us to prioritize things according to what's immediate and what isn't. Of course, there are always surprises. Anytime you, if you watch any of the shows on TV, you know that if you do anything to an existing structure, you're always gonna find surprises.
Right. That puts you and I on the same page, I guess.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions about the annex? The other thing the county ministers did today, there was a, a difference of opinion over how the handbook talks about retirees' insurance and everything like that. We had an employee retired that wanted to put her spouse, who works for the county, on the, on the retirees' insurance. So, uh, I'm not an insurance person, but I, Mrs. King took care of that. We approved a letter of clarification today for the handbook, pending the approval by our attorney and by Mr. Irwin from our personnel handbook. I haven't sent him a copy of it yet, but I will get this week. The other thing is, we did approve the sheriff's vehicle today. Sheriff brought to us two quotes, one from Vantage Ford, the other one from Reedman. It was for a Durango. I'm sorry, Dodge Ram. Oh, that's, I'm sorry, two of them. There was several thousand dollars in trade-in value given to some vehicles that were being traded in. And there was about a $6,000, $5,000 to $6,000 difference between what Reedman quoted and what Vantage Ford quoted, so we gave the bid to Reedman Motors. And last but not least, uh, I was made aware last year, probably first part of December, maybe, maybe later in the month, that there were going to be overages on what our attorney working for, for us, for, on the windmill project, he's going to have overruns. So if you picked up, I just put it in your boxes today because I just got it today, or yesterday, excuse me. So I had called him in the first part of the month and asked him to send me a, what is owed to him, and to give us a detailed explanation as to what it's for. At the time, he didn't know if Ombal had any outstanding charges or not, which they did. Okay? So, unless my math is incorrect, the bill for Mr. Hall was $38,536.49. Ombal had an outstanding balance of $16,400. And I put a copy of the check that we received from Nextera, which is part of the agreement, for $40,000, which was, uh, delivered here, excuse me, the check was dated January the 7th. The auditor has that check, which leaves an outstanding balance due to, however you, well, I would assume it would, well, it would be an outstanding balance of sum to Mr. Hall and Ombal, $14,936.49. I, uh, I don't know what else to say or how to explain it. You've got everything that I have. I haven't had any conversations that would, uh, that I could elaborate on or that would give you more detail than what I just explained and what you have in front of.
I could probably shed a little light on that.
Please.
In my discussions with Mr. Hall, um, he did tell me that we'd be about $15,000 over what was agreed upon by Nextera. This was a situation that was caused by the council, plain and simple. We delayed the process. In that delay of the process of the approving of the abatement, it cost us another $15,000. Plain and simple. There's no way to sugarcoat it, it is what it is. And now because of that, we have to figure out a way to pay that, because we can't go back to Nextera. It wasn't their fault that we dragged their feet. They didn't do anything to, to create this. This was a council problem, not a commissioner problem, it was a council problem. So, um, if we're gonna be working, turn into a working relationship with Nextera, um, those of us that have had businesses or whatever, if, uh, you know, somebody screws up something, or it's, it's our fault, we, we have to make good on it. We can't go back to the customer and say, you know, you need to pay an additional amount of money because we screwed up.
I guess, I guess a question to it, Mike, is what did they do in that last 30 days for us?
Well, you've got it in your, I mean, it's, it's phone calls, it's meetings, it's meetings between the Nextera and themselves, Ombal calculating numbers. Of course, any phone call they took from any one of us, whether it be a commissioner, whether it be, tells a person that gets added on there.
So it'd be in December?
Anything after your December 6th meeting, I think it was, Russ, I'm not sure, I think it was the 6th.
You know, them driving out here, attending meetings, um...
If you read to you that this itemized, uh, bill here, Russ, you can see there's all the, the time that Rick Hall spent on the telephone with various people. Anytime you picked up the phone and called Rick Hall, we were getting charged for it.
I never called Rick Hall.
No. I never called him either.
He's just saying we, oh, okay.
The county was, was getting charged for it, but you can, as you look through the different dates and, and the charges and everything, you can, you can see who, who was doing the calling and who he was talking to.
You know, a lot of this was going back and forth, and, you know, what do we need to do? What does Nextera need to do? Mary Salata from Nextera, their representative, you know, talking back and forth, any, any of those conversations that took place. And, you know, Nextera is getting the bill from their attorney as well, you know, for the additional fees that they incurred, so, you know, we're not alone in this.
Is it possible that this could be offset by the first payment that the county expects to receive from Nextera? I think in 2015?
It could, but in the meantime, we still have to pay it.
Um, if I may, I, I asked the question...
Are you talking about deducting from that? Uh, we'll see in Nextera, I think that...
I asked the question as to when that payment will be made. I don't think, I don't remember if the contract specified when it, when it had to be made. Maybe they can make it tomorrow, maybe they don't have to make it till the end of the year. I think it said 2015 is what it said. So I, I have no idea, just, and I may, I may not have complete information, but to my knowledge, there's no requirement or specification that requires them to pay it at a certain time so that payment could be made in a timely manner. I may be wrong.
No, you're right.
Okay.
Couldn't that come out contractual services and then be paid back?
We could, but I would say we probably won't see that money till the last half of the year, some point then. That, that's my guess, in my conversations with Jeremy.
I was thinking there was a trigger point that...
No, I don't think there's a trigger point.
Did the commissioners have a contract with Rick Hall?
Uh, yes.
Did you guys have a contract?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
For, for just what?
It was for that 40, wasn't it?
Well, the, the amount that, that, uh, Nextera agreed to pay for legal services is what Mr. Hall, to my understanding, that's what he, he kind of computed would be required for the length of time required to get through what the commissioners had to do to approve our three contracts and, and the abatement process.
It was also based upon his past experience with other counties and what he's charged them, and he looked at what we had and the complexity of it, there was a lack of complexity, and he said, "This would be the number that we would charge you. Are you okay with it?" You know, if the Nextera's in agreement with it and paying that, then we were in agreement with it, the commissioners were in agreement with it. That's how that came about.
So Nextera has, or they have to pay, they gotta pay Rick Hall too, right? Are we paying the whole, are we paying the whole bill?
No, they, they gave us $40,000. There, there's a copy of the check on the very back of your papers. They did, they have lived up to their obligation of giving us $40,000.
And no fault to them. Uh, if it was their, if it was their mistake or something that caused us to, just to drag out, but it was the council that dragged it out and incurred the costs, not Nextera. And because of that, Nextera is also paying higher legal fees on their end to Mary Salata's firm, which I can't remember the name of the firm. Do you know who it is?
Bing and Grant and Joe.
So under contractual services, I don't know what we have.
Can you tell me the commissioners' budget?
Yeah, I think you only have that, but...
I, uh, I, I informed your president and vice president last night about this on the phone, and then I ran copies for them, and then this morning I ran you guys' copies. We have money in there, contractual services, but quite frankly, I don't know what that is, how much of that is already dedicated to, I don't know if the amount deposited, or excuse me, uh, put in the budget, I don't know if that's based on past experience as to what the commissioners have spent on obligated contractual services throughout the year. That's what I don't know. If you're, if you're thinking about borrowing from that, I, quite frankly, I don't, I can't tell you one way or the other.
Is that 40,000, is that, the first year payments from the schedule that I remember is $52,000?
$52,000 in 2012.
Is it 40, part of that 52?
No.
No.
No. That's completely, completely separate.
Yeah, that's what I thought. 52 was not, is basically the, I forgot if they used the word, the...
Economic development.
Well, that wasn't economic development, that was a, in good faith, a, kind of a, you know...
When are we supposed to be receiving that, any idea?
The economic commitment?
No, the 52,000.
Well, that's what we were just talking about. That's probably the latter part of the year.
Latter part of the year.
I would think, because construction won't probably start until, I think you said 2016?
Well, as, what we were told, of course, you know, a big project, construction start can be moved up or back, but what we were originally told is, right now, it's the end of the latter half of 2016 is when construction should begin.
So I would think of the, yeah, in time payment, whatever it was called, the 52,000 would probably be until the latter part of the year, to kind of, maybe a year worth in their construction.
I would think you would have enough in your contractual services to pay that bill. And then if you're gonna receive it in the middle of the year or a little later in the year, then you would have, I would think that's, I would, I don't, I don't ever remember your contractual service being that close.
I think we'd probably need time to look at that.
We will, we will look at that, Russ, and if it can be done, I, I'm only a third of the commissioners, I don't have a problem with it, as long as we don't run ourselves short for things that are obligated. I'm, this is the first time I'm president, so I'm still learning a lot myself, okay? I, I'm just, I don't wanna say do it because, uh, we need to at least research and make sure that, that those monies are obligated for yearly contractual services that come along each year, like the Johnson controls for the jail and for the courthouse, et cetera. So I, I, I say I cooperate, but I don't, I'm only one-third of the commissioners, and I don't want to run that fund short.
But do we have leftover from last year?
I'm sorry?
What do we have leftover out of 2014? Do we know?
In what contractual services? I...
Close our balance?
I don't know if they've...
Did we use it all?
I think the vice president's getting ready to look.
I'll tell you here in a second, Russ.
You're the, you're the budget man, right?
No, I don't say that. Um, I, I can tell you what... Um, I, I can tell you what, uh, what the commissioners had leftover in contractual services 2014, but I don't have a, a 2015 budget economy, so, I mean, second to find the right page.
I'm sure we didn't cut it that much. We never do. I'm gonna take it out of this.
I should have all this memorized, Frank, but...
Russ, uh, Mr. Wicker thinks we have around, they'll call us to 159 in that.
At what?
A hundred and fifty-nine in our contractual services.
I would think you'd be saying paying sixteen thousand out of that, or whatever it is.
I think you're gonna be too.
I would think so. I don't think we're gonna cut it that close. This is not due yet, right now? Is this due now?
You're gonna research that, Frank, and then come back to us next...
Is this due now?
Next meeting and then...
So, ask, and see where we're at.
Well...
Twenty thirteen, it's sixty-six, or sixty-seven.
It was just, like I say, I got the email, well, Monday, yesterday, so, uh...
But that doesn't...
I would say a timely, uh, response is required, especially since they're owed the money. But, yes, I can look into it, Mark, and find out exactly how much those monies are probably obligated for contracts and things of that nature.
You, we adopted a hundred and sixty for you for 2014. You requested the same thing for 2015, and we approved that. It says in 2013 that you expended sixty-six, basically sixty-seven thousand dollars. But that doesn't speak to what contracts you may have pending now. You may have entered into new contracts between 2013 and 2014.
We've entered into contracts with Johnson Controls for the courthouse and the jail, and the Stanley contract, well, with the company for Stanley for the jail controls. Off the top of my head, I don't think we have any others that I can recall. It doesn't mean my memory's not faulty.
Those are your big contracts?
No, those are just the ones we've done so far, okay? And I, the Johnson Controls, I can't tell you right off the bat what those were, and like I said, the Stanley Control will be between nineteen and twenty.
Well, can you look into that? If we have to have another, schedule another meeting between now and March, we'll do that, you have it taken care of.
Give me, give me a few days, and then I'll, I'll let your president and your vice president...
Won't cost us any more money, well, for us to look into this.
I'm sorry?
Won't cost any more money to look into this, well.
No, not unless there's a late fee.
After hours, I did have a, have absorbed the lead.
Your reports count.
Frank, Frank, at the, at the end of, according to the end of the year report and service contracts, commissioners had eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
At the end of fourteen?
At the end of fourteen.
Okay. It sounds as if we can maybe accommodate you.
So, that's, right now, I'd say that's the easiest place to get it. May not be the best place, but that's the easiest place to get it.
Where would be the best place?
Out of your pocket?
Yeah, but where would be the best place? You say that's the easiest, but where would be the best? I would think...
Out of your pocket would be the best.
With contractual services. We're taking it out of Wolf's, he's the one that wanted to lay it from.
Okay, well, well, we'd take it out of...
But where else would you take it from?
Well, I think it makes sense.
I'm serious.
We might have to...
County general, would be the only thing I'd think of, just take it out of county general.
Isn't that where it comes from, out of contractual services? It comes out of county general, anyway.
Well, the commissioner's budget is part of county general, but, but they, they have, they had, you know, originally a hundred and sixty thousand dollars budgeted in that line item, and, um, they spent a little over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for 2014, so they ended the year with a balance of over eighteen thousand, so, that carried over to fifteen. So, that's one way you could do it. But if, if, we'll figure out a way, hopefully Rick Hall won't put a late fee on it, but if he, if he learned anything by dealing with his council, he, he should know that we're not gonna make a snap decision about anything.
Okay. Any other questions while I'm here? Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Frank.
Before we get into our committee reports, I think we need to go over our appointments for the various committees. Currently, Dale Strong serves as the committee chair for the Budget Committee. Dale, would you continue to accept that role?
If no one else wants all that work, I guess, yeah.
Okay, Mark, do you wanna continue to serve on it with me?
Huh?
Do you wanna continue to serve on that committee with me?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that committee is in place. For the Wage Committee, I'd like to appoint Shirley Weiss to chair that, if there's no objections to that. Are there any objections?
Not for me.
Okay. Thanks, Russ.
I object to a lot of things, but not that.
Okay, Mark and Jim's not here. Russ, would you continue to serve on that with Shirley?
I would help her any, any way I can.
Mark?
She does most of the work.
Would you continue to serve on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would help her any way I can.
Okay.
Anyway, so, good luck, Shirley.
Jim won't too, Mr. Dark too. He's not here, so he doesn't get to accept the job.
That way advertising costs his money.
Thank you, Shirley, for accepting that. I know you've a lot going on, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Dale, did you wanna share anything with us in Budget Committee or just on the way?
Well, just to let the other three members know, Budget and Finance Committee did meet, we met here at 3:30 this afternoon, and we've went over some preliminary data pertaining to fiscal year fourteen. We don't have everything we need yet to make a comprehensive report for 2014, what happened, where we got there, what caused it, and possibly what we can do to prevent it. But briefly, our general fund balance did decrease again in 2014 by a little over two-hundred and five thousand dollars, compared to four-hundred and five thousand dollars that we let in the red in 2013. So, we are making progress, but not nearly as fast as we'd like to, and time's running out on us. Our general fund balance started the end of the year less than a million dollars, so we're, we're getting dangerously low. So, as soon as, you know, our committee will be meeting again, maybe, maybe two or three times before we finalize this thing, but we will, within the next month or two, get a, a detailed report, ready to share with the council, commissioners, press, any, any other interested parties, to let everyone know how our finances went in 2014. So, other than that, I guess there's nothing else I, is there anything else I need to say about that, Mike, do you think?
I don't think so.
Does that satisfy you, Mark? Okay, so, you'll be hearing more from us about that.
I'd like to thank Dale for all the work that he puts in on the Budget Committee. I know he works a lot of, puts in a lot of hours and spends a lot of energy and time on it, and he's very committed to it, and I appreciate that, and I know, on behalf of the council, we do too. I'd like to thank Russ for the effort that he put in for the Wage Committee as well too, in doing that. Okay. Fayette County Public Library, 2014 Annual Report.
I'd like to thank the council for inviting us to present the annual report for the library. My name is Melissa Scott, I'm the assistant director with the library. The library continues to strive to be an integral part of the community. We are no longer just book repositories, but changing community resource. In 2014, we offered three hundred and seventy programs to our community. Those programs included storytimes, school age enrichment, book discussions, art classes, computer classes, and genealogy workshops, and much more. We have also partnered with groups like the Fiber Artist Group and the Whitewater Valley Arts Association to encourage the appreciation of the arts. We are currently working with the Chamber of Commerce, United Way, Purdue Extension, to bring an event in the summer for our youth. We have also began to offer new services at the library, including a color copier, which we have had a great reception from the public, and an education collection that is aimed toward our teachers and homeschooling parents. In 2015, we also look forward to building our relationships with the local schools. In your, I'm gonna be dealing with the right side of the folder, and in your folder, we have the, our annual report. The first page is our circulation report. We have loaned out a hundred and two thousand eighty-six items, which gave us a per capita of seven point eight six items. We have seen in our stacks an increase in the use of eBooks and downloadable audio. Last year in eBooks, we loaned out four thousand nine hundred and sixty-two eBooks through our Overdrive Consortium. If you turn to the second page, this shows how many items the library owns. We currently own over a hundred and twenty thousand items, which a hundred and seven thousand of those are still books. Next, I'd like to share with you, the programming that we had, as I mentioned, was three hundred and seventy programs. We had over three thousand people in attendance to those programs. We also see lots of school visits. Last year, we had eighty-five school visits, which had close to two thousand students who came into our building. We have twenty thousand library cards in the system, which I think is pretty outstanding with the size of our community. If you turn to the third page, this is something new that we wanted to share with you, it's our classroom collections. Classroom collections are aimed to teachers, they will come in to supplement their, either classroom libraries or school library, typically on a specific subject, like when they were teaching on Martin Luther King Day, we had quite a few teachers come in and get books. That helps not only us with numbers, but it really helps the school because it does not increase their budget, and it helps teachers so they're not going out and buying these items themselves. The final page is of value to our community. This is using a formula of what each item would typically cost you if you went out and purchased it on your own. Last year, our value to our community was three million, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The library had a budget of eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars, so if you look at that, it's a difference of three million, thirty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. I think that in itself shows how much needed those resources. Does anybody have any questions on that part of the folder? Or any services at the library?
That, Melissa, if I can interrupt for a minute?
Please.
I'll, I'll participate with you in this, 'cause as everyone here knows, I'm president of the library board, and Melissa and our director, Anne Marie Harold Short, they both have to put up with me at the library. But I'm, I'm especially proud of our library because, and you see that the, the retail, the retail value of the services that we offer at the library totaled for last year just almost four million dollars for a, for a budget of less than nine hundred thousand dollars. So, in that respect, the taxpayers are really getting a, a lot of return for the eleven cent tax rate that the library operates on. So, you're, and the more people that use the library, the more bang taxpayers get for their bucks. If, if our patronage usage was up, that, that retail number would also go up with And Melissa, were you going to say anything about the GALE courses that we've recently added?
On the left side of the folder, we do have a brochure on GALE courses. They are offered free through the library, they are six-week courses, you have computer classes, grant writing classes. I just took a class on management from them. These are taught by professionals, they are taught by university professors, people in the field. If our, we could get our community to use GALE, I think we could see an increase in our education. They's, 'cause, let's face it, we're not all gonna be able to go to a college class, but this will give you a good, basic understanding of management. And that's one of the reasons I took the management class, was to give me a better idea of what I'm into. I took one on grant writing as well this past month, because libraries looking for more and more grants to help support our programs. I would encourage everyone in here to try one of the courses. There are two lessons a week, each class only took me an hour a week to do, so that's not a whole lot of time, but it's a lot of information. Anne Marie's gonna cover some of the other items that are in our folder, but we're gonna do it briefly, and supply you that time to get up on your...
I'm Anne Marie Harold Short, I'm the director of the library, and I'm going to cover the left side. But I did wanna point out one thing that is on the right side, that we didn't really, it's kind of a little sheepy to brag about ourselves, and I wanna brag about the staff a little bit, and the board. This is our 2014 accomplishments, and I'm not gonna go through all of those with you, but, you know, these, this is the things that we were able to accomplish with that budget this year. I think it's important to know those. We did receive a grant for little free libraries from Duke Energy, it was a five thousand dollar grant, and that has made us, made it possible for us to provide little libraries in our community, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But, to start with, we have the online resources that we have here in our library, and we have eBooks, audiobooks that are provided through Overdrive, and that's, you know, you can, you can use those from our website, you just choose Overdrive, it tells you how to get, go to the bottom of our website menu and choose that, and they're downloadable, so if you have an iPad or an Android tablet, you can load books on, or Kindle, any of those kind of eBooks devices, you can download items, and they're free. You don't have to, you know, because of your, you just use your library card like you would to check out a book. We have automobile repair manuals on our website.
Yeah, unfortunately, I've had to use that too many times.
Yeah.
It's a good thing.
It is a good thing.
But it's a bad thing that I have to use it.
Sometimes we help you with the bad things, and, at least you don't have to face it. We have, we just recently started purchasing the online encyclopedias like Britannica and World Book, so that students can use those, again, with their library card, it's free. We have eBooks such as, for kids, such as ESECO and Tunnel Books, both of those are things that you can download and sit and read with your, with your kids on a device or on the computer. And I won't go into all the other things, but we have genealogy resources. We have reading sources, like if you, if you want to read another book that was similar to the book you've already read, we have sources that you can find on our website to do that. And one kind of important one that I wanted to bring up that is in jeopardy because of the state's budget is called Inspire. That is a free source of research reference, or, you know, reference materials provided by the state library. And there, there is some talk that they could be, that could be defunded. And the problem with that is that libraries would each have, rather than the state library providing that for all of us, each library would have to provide whatever they could. And none of us would probably be able to provide everything the state library is providing through a federal grant. We would each have to provide those on our own. So that's something to think about. You know, if you have a chance to, to talk to legislators, you might keep in mind that this, would be a bad thing for that to disappear. Also, on the left side, we have the Fayette County Public Library Bookmobile schedule. It changes, but this is a typical schedule. These are the stops that we go to. You can see that there are a lot of stops. This is our county library. We have the library, the main branch for the city here in Connersville. But we, we provide service for the entire county. So we don't really have branches like some of the other libraries have. But we have a moving branch that goes to all these different stops. And the stops include stops in the community, the jail, schools, nursing homes. We also do provide other outreach programs, not, some of them Bookmobile-related, but some of them from staff who go to provide homebound service. Aftercare programs, such as the one from the services at the link for after-school, and other programs outside the library, such as daycare visits. So those are all ways that we provide county service. You'll also see in the packet, some programming calendars. This is our January calendar, and it's very typical of all the different kinds of programs we provide. This is our tentative February calendar, and these are the ones that are provided just basically in the library. This one includes the ones that are provided in addition to the ones that we have in the library or on the Bookmobile. And Melissa mentioned the GALE courses. They are great value. We provide, we pay for those. We pay for the GALE courses, and then it's free to the people who take those courses. And in the case of our library employees, we have to be certified through the state of Indiana. And that's one more avenue that we can use to, to educate our staff. So we also have in here, I'm trying to hurry up a little bit, but we have the Little Free Library information. This is a little pamphlet about, or flyer about what the little libraries are. It's actually just little boxes. We have one out front of the courthouse here of books that are donated so that people in the community can, can grab a book to read. You know, if you wanted to sit outside on a nice day, you could grab a book to read and then take it back, or you could bring back, you could bring some of your books to exchange with other people. These are the different places that we have the Little Free Libraries. And last, it's just a little plug for the funding that we get at the library. Of course, we get the local funding from property taxes and county option income tax. But in addition to those, we, we do get some federal funding to provide the internet access that we have, excuse me, and telecommunications. The federal government provides those to libraries through a program, basically, that most people call E-Rate, but it's called the Universal Service Fund. Those are also a program that could be in jeopardy, going away if people don't let their legislators know that that's important, you know, they feel it's important. They also, federal funding is also, also provides LSTA grants, and that's the Libraries Service and Technology Grants. The most recent, the most recent way that our library used those funds was for our early literacy program called 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. So those, again, that's an important thing that the federal government does for libraries. And then we have state library funding. State library administers the funds for the LSTA grants and also provides other services to libraries due to those proposed budgetary cutbacks I talked about. The state library is currently at risk of losing major parts of its funding in addition to losing some staff members. Governor Pence proposed budget cuts funds from connectivity, which is for the internet, and the line item for Inspire Database, which I talked about Inspire. It's, the state library is the largest research collection in the state of Indiana. The genealogy division is important to a lot of people for their family history. And the Inspire Database is provided from funding through the state library. It's accessible to all citizens of Indiana. It meets the research needs of college and high school students, provides consumer information, a collection of full-text journals, college test preparation resources, and really just a lot more. Without state access, local libraries would be forced to provide costly resources from our limited budgets and probably couldn't provide all of those. So does anybody have any questions about our annual report?
Very thorough. You've done a great job.
Thanks for letting us share our success.
A good report again this year, Anne Marie and Melissa. And I'm, I'm especially proud of what we do at the library. And there's just more services that we provide than we can sit here all night and itemize. I'm very pleased with the things we're able to do up there, so.
Well, we thank you for the opportunity to serve you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the, and where you do.
Next is our 911 director, 9/11/2014 Annual Report.
I'm kind of concerned because I don't think my report's as extensive as the library, so. Dale had asked me to do an annual report. I think it started in 2011. And it really has helped to put figures in place and stuff like that, so. I will try to do this hurrying, because my family's waiting for dinner. We are already consolidated, which is a good thing because that was due by December 31st of 2014. So that is one thing that Fayette County did do right, was when they started dispatch, they did do it consolidated. So that was one financial burden that we did not have to take on. As of December 31st, we had one director, myself. We had six full-timers, two supervisors in there, and eight part-timers. We had hired, and there was a few that didn't make it or went to different agencies or whatever. Our radios, we're still not having an issue with those. Those were installed in 2011, so they are efficient for everything that we're needing now. On page four, you'll see on the computers, each one of our workstations has four computers and five monitors. We are going to have to start looking, Michael and I have looked at that, about starting to replace those because those are used 24/7. We tried to make sure we had all of our equipment up and going with Visteon. First one out, so we wouldn't have that financial crunch. So we're going to be starting to do that as we can. With the 911 system, we are still compatible for the next, did you guys not get these?
Yeah, I got it. I, I got it.
Okay, I stuck them in everybody's mailboxes this morning. Russ is looking at me like a deer in headlights.
I didn't get one.
It wasn't in your box? Well, someone snagged it because I know it was in yours. I'll get them to you over here in the morning. I'll make new copies. The 911 system, we are still on next-gen compliant with that. We are able to receive and get texting 911. Able, they're able to text into 911. We're able to text to them as well. Fayette County was one of the first counties that was to go live with that. We are really pushing that out there on the public education. However, a lot of citizens are still unsure on that. As far as training, I received my emergency number professional certification, which is a national certification. I'm very proud of receiving that. That's a lot of hard work. All of our, and you can see on there the other stuff that I obtained in 2014. As far as the dispatchers, they all are still certified or recertified in their emergency medical dispatching, able to do the CPR, the pre-arrival medical directions on any medical call. They are certified or recertified in the NCIC IDEX. They complete their NIMS 100 and 700. Every month, I require two hours of training. I put on, it's the third Wednesday of every month, they are mandated to come in for a two-hour training session. So that alone gives my dispatchers at least 24 hours of training a year, which is awesome. Our Everbridge Emergency Notification System. Currently, we have 9,107 people signed up for it. That's an increase of 600 people from last year. There are 18,010 contact ways for our citizens to be contacted. That is an increase of 1,000. So one person may have four different contact methods. We continue to educate via the social media, the fairs, the school system websites, things like that. We did send out Everbridge Emergency Notifications for the weather-related, city government closings. Thank you, Mike. Road closings and boil water advisories, school delay cancellations. And we also still utilize the system on a daily with our volunteer fire departments and our city fire as well. The citizens are just raving over it still. The feedback is very positive. The biggest issue is usually whenever the school is delayed or canceled for the first time, we have all of the college kids and the retired teachers or the empty nesters that have no more high school kids at home that need stuff changed. So it gets kind of backlogged a little bit on there, so. Went through on the call volumes. On the, for 2014, you will see a monthly report of our 911 calls for every month, and then a total for our wireline, which are home phones, our business phones, which a lot of people are not having anymore. We received 1,682 calls. That is a decrease of 46 calls, which isn't huge. Wireless, which is our fastest-growing. We received 8,643 total calls, which is an increase of 1,275 calls. So I believe the younger generations are getting cellphones earlier. The Voice Over the Internet Protocol, we received 528 calls, which is an increase of 56 calls. Keep in mind, those calls are over the internet, so your internet provider might be in Indiana, and you might be in California. And whenever they are using that to call 911, we have, we will get plotted that it's in a different state or wherever their server is. So those take a little bit of work to track down on the mapping. A noninitialized cellphone is a cellphone that's not in service or a prepaid phone that has no more minutes in use. We received 666 total calls of that, which is an increase of 229. We receive a lot of those due to them not having minutes to where they cannot call the non-emergency line. Are a lot of those emergencies? No. They are using it for the free system that 911 answers those calls. All in total, we received 11,513 911 calls, which is an increase of 1514 from 2003. The non-emergency calls that come out to the 211 line, I am not able to keep track of that. My center does not have the capabilities of that. And then if, once you pass the monthly.
Something that we talked about, you said you were kind of flooded with a lot of that.
On the.
The 211 stuff.
Yes.
Is there anything that Michael can come up with?
We have had a couple of solutions, but once we get IP-based on our phones, we were holding off on that until all of the issues were taken care of at the courthouse. Then we were going to put in kind of an automated press form for accident reports, gun reports, and kind of do that, kind of like what the sheriff's department has. It removes a lot of unnecessary work in doing that. So it's coming. And once you get past the monthly reports, you can see the incidents. We dispatched for all of these departments, the Connersville Police Department. We had 11,278 incidents, which is a decrease of 773 incidents. The sheriff's department, we had 4,538 incidents, which is a decrease of 2632. The reason for these decreases, those were huge red flags. They quit logging onto the computer system. Their residence checks, if they're in the area of Everton or Pleasantview or anything, business checks. They average about eight of those a day, at least the sheriff's department does. So that definitely takes care of why that is such a decrease because that was a huge red flag on there. I'm like, oh, there's no way. They have two new deputies. That should create hundreds more calls easy. EMS, they reached 2,490, which is an increase of 12 incidents. Connersville Fire Department, 1,099 incidents, which is an increase of 140 incidents. That's a very large increase, and I will begin with the chief to find out why that increase was so much, if we actually had that many more or if it was medical-related or whatever. Everton Fire, there was no change from 322 incidents. And Bentonville Fire had 129, which was a decrease of 22 incidents. And all of those numbers totaled to 20,011 incidents, which is a decrease of 3,267. Which again, a lot of those are where the sheriff's department and the police department do not love that stuff in. As you go on, you'll see your, I have them labeled on the top of each one. Those, these are the times of the day and what number of calls come in. That is important for staffing purposes. You don't want your, you know, your brand-new rookies on the height of the day and things like that. So that's very important to pull. I've pulled up every single agency, the number of calls that they have responded to. So you can look at that at your own leisure. If you go past those, I'm almost at about my last page. The public education, like I said, we are pushing to educate the public about the texting. It is through our 911 system. It is an awesome feature. Eventually, our next phase on that, which will probably happen in 2015, is where people can text us pictures of the accidents or anything like that, and we'll be able to relay that information out to our officers, our fire department, and our emergency services. Social media is a huge impact on the public education. We do have a Facebook page. We do not manage a Twitter or a, I forget what the Instagram, what it, we don't do any of that. We just simply do the Facebook. That is controlled by myself and Supervisor Kelly Van Meter. We reach 4,157 friends that way. Most of the time, those people repost them, and those are great for the weather levels, school delays and cancellation, and that reduces a lot of the phone calls that we were talking about with that. Everbridge has saved a lot of the phone calls with that as well. So we're still pushing that. The 911 surcharges did not increase in 2014. They are still the 50 cents for when people go in and pay the, by the prepaid wireless minutes. And it is 75 cents for landline wireless a month. The prepaid phones are the fastest-growing because nobody has contracts on them, and they can always get the latest and the greatest phones, so. I know that they are looking into the non-service initialized phones because it's costing us work, and, you know, we don't want to reduce them from being able to call 911. We want them to be able to get help, but at the same time, they're getting the service for free. And it's costing, you know, it costs you 75 cents a month for your cellphone and then this person free. But that will all be through legislation. That won't be anything county level. There is going to be bills presented for these surcharges to be increased to a dollar. I'll keep you updated on that. We will probably know that sometime around July. That's usually when your guys' world starts over and things like that. For the budget for 2014, Fayette County received $2,292,330.91 from the 911 surcharge money, and the city paid $120,000 toward their share. If you see on the bottom of page eight, you'll see the beginning, January 2014 balance and the December 2014 balance, which decreased by $45,502.19. This is the first year that, since I have been the director, that we have not increased our ending balance, that we have not made money. A lot of that, I, you know, I, it was a cut, a lot of it. A lot of that, I, you know, it was a cut, a lot of that in the city. We, last year in 2013, we received 170 from them, and we're receiving 120. So we'll be keeping an eye on that. I know in 2015, we stripped the budget a la hot, so we should still be okay. We still have a nice little nest egg, but we're gonna, there's a lot of projects coming up as well, so. And then on the back, it has every penny that was spent, every money that came in and out, and that's my transparency right there. Is there any questions on any of that?
No, like, like you said, we'll be watching it too because-
Yeah.
-the raises on the store basic.
Yeah. And that, and like I said, normally we make about 45, so, you know, those raises want in this, but I cause, I can just bounce it to the, you know, the city portion when we're decreased that much, so that's what I want to kind of earmark that one for. You know, it'll help, like I said, it helps a lot with our wireless. Once they started the surcharge on those prepaid phones, we're seeing that effect. And if they increase that, then it will help our budget as well. And, you know, and if they stop the non-service initialized phones from being able to call 911, you know, that's going to be their decision, but, you know, that's costing us money too, so. But that's things at the state level that's on the table there, so.
What, what do you mean by noninitialized?
They are the cellphones that are not, that are not active anymore. They're not on a cellphone plan. They're prepaid phones that have normal minutes.
Okay.
No, if it's a cellphone, if you don't have a plan on it anymore, you can still call 911 on it.
Yes.
You don't have to have a service plan on it. You can still-
Yes. And a lot of those phone calls come from, you're my child, I got a new phone, you want to play with this one, and they don't take the battery out. And you would be amazed at how many kids already know how to call 911, which is great. But, and so a lot of them are kids playing with the phone, which, as the deputy can attest to, we send officers there, which, you know, it's, it's kind of, all balances on each other, so.
Okay. Is there, is there pending legislation that you know of for this year to raise the surcharges?
Yes, yes. And I don't know the bill numbers. They're written on my office, they're written at my office, so. I will definitely keep you guys abreast on that. I was appointed the Indiana NINA chapter, the this region vice president, also on the Indiana AppCo state level chapter, a chairman, or I'm sorry, a director on that. And I just got asked to be part of the Turk Committee for the state for the southern region. So I'm pretty knowledgeable of what's going on, and I'll get firsthand news of what's going on with everything, so.
Okay. These detailed statistics about the calls that you handle for every department is, paints a very revealing picture of what goes on in the community.
Yes.
Not just during the day, but during the night, 24/7.
Yes. We, you know, and the thing to keep in mind too is, one incident might require four or five agencies, you know. A 1050 PI, which is an accident with injury in the county, you're going to have the county deputy, you're going to have EMS, the county fire, and Rescue 21 all going. So it gets pretty hairy in there. But we do it.
Thank you.
Any questions for anyone?
Nothing else?
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Moving on to 144s, we got the auditor.
Thank you. Pretty basic request today. There are two staff positions that Terry Cabbins and Nancy George are currently holding. I am asking the council to approve their promotion to second deputies. There's no additional funding that's required for this. The money is already budgeted. This would just promote their status to, as I said earlier, second deputies. Are there any questions? And I'm seeking counsel.
I'll make a motion.
They have a motion to approve the 144 for the auditor for the two second deputy positions. And a second.
Second.
And a second.
You guys do the first one.
Mark, call him up, call him. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Ayes aye, six nothing. Motion carries. Next, the sheriff. Billy Wason.
Oh, sorry. Well, the first thing that I have is, like I said, the 144s. First one, and I actually brought the 144s this morning to the auditor during the commissioners' meeting, so I don't have copies with me, so I apologize. The first is the road deputy position. We had our merit board meeting two weeks ago. The merit board unanimously picked Kyle Miller, who was serving as our court officer as the next deputy, and I approved that. And Kyle has been court officer for almost a year, done an excellent job, very highly recommended from the judges, prosecutor. Everybody's had a great time working with Kyle, very professional, did excellent during the testing, and really impressed the merit board during his interview. So that's the first 144, and the other is for a jail officer to replace Kyle's position because he is moving from the jail to the road budget. And the jail officer is Brandis Watkins, Randy Watkins. Randy works back at Community Corrections now. He had interviewed under the prior administration and had a pretty good interview, and the position came available, so offered him the job, so. Took those to the commissioners this morning and need your guys' approval.
So I'll make a motion to approve the 144?
I've got a question first, Tom.
Okay.
Your, your position as chief of the detectives, that was, who took that position? Wasen take it?
Wasen is detective now, yes.
Okay. And then this, this one here replaces?
This was the open position that was vacated when Mark Steele retired.
Saying we have my appropriate force.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to approve that 144.
I'll second it.
Motion's been placed and seconded. Any further discussion on the 144 for the sheriff's deputies? Okay, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Ayes aye, motion carries.
Okay. The forms that I passed out to everybody are, it's a continuing education fund that I became aware of early last month. And it is a fund that is set up, it is the fee, $3 off of every citation goes into this fund. And it has been there for quite some time, and it is only used for law enforcement, education, training, supplies, and equipment. And it has not been accessed by the sheriff's department. I reached out to a few sheriffs and said, "Do you use your continuing education fund?" "Yeah, all the time. It's how we pay for our training." When I told them the amount that is in there, as you can see, they were, I could hear their jaws hit the ground over the phone. It is something they access quite often and use for their training. So there is $62,708.12 in there. Myself and the auditor sat down and went over that last week, and I have a few things that I'm requesting from that fund. The statute says that the council does not have to appropriate that money, that we can submit claims, but I thought it would be best to bring it to you guys, make you aware of it, and discuss it with you guys first. There is one, it is membership to the Indiana Sheriff's Association. It does provide other benefits, but it also gives us 10 free jail trainings, as you can see on the form. Jail officers are required 16 hours of training. We provide a lot of that in-house. We can send as many officers as possible that we can afford to send to these trainings, and they're throughout the state and offer many different types of training, but definitely a good price for that type of training, to send that many officers. And it does provide other benefits, as you can see, accidental death benefit. We generally paid for that in the past from the commissary fund, but I think with the training that is there, and there's also a quarterly enrollment to the ILEA Jail Academy, which we send jailers all the time, and we've also hired, I've hired four jailers since I came in office, so, and they all have to be trained within one year, so there is a benefit to that. And the second is the IDEA Conference, something we attend every year. Generally, we've paid for that out of different funds, the RUFF Fund. The last few years, we paid from a grant that we got from the Drug Coalition. With this fund being accessible, and it can only be used for these type of things, I'm sending two officers. That'll be Sergeant Leonard Baker, who will be the new RUFF drug officer. Once we get Kyle, the new deputy, Kyle Miller out of the academy, Leonard Baker will be the new drug officer, and Clint Brown is, is our newest deputy. Clint is very active. He's had several arrests already and got quite a bit of drugs in those arrests, so I think they're probably the two best equipped to go to this. I've been for the last seven years. It's a very beneficial training, and this is $250 apiece for each officer, and then $196 for them to share a room for two nights. For a grand total of $1,971 for both of those requests.
On this, I used to share for the affiliate membership thing here. What made you pick the silver over, say, the platinum or the gold or the bronze?
Well, cost, basically. I, I thought the trainings that were there, I mean, if you guys want to give me more, we'll do more, but I was trying to keep it, trying to keep it low. But the jail training, we'll take care of, take care of the jail training very easily. We do a lot in-house. We're getting ready to do a DT class with some of the new officers, get them equipped on how to handle situations, but just trying to keep it low for now. See how it works out, and then next year, if we want to go up, we can. Well, if you guys tell me, we can.
I see there's three different things you get added on there, which I know nothing about, constitutional, AJOT, proactive jail management, and ISO Merit Duty Professional Development Training Seminar.
The only one I see out of the platinum that I think would be beneficial for us would be the Merit Deputy Professional Development Training Seminar. Those are one-day classes. Those would be great if we could do those, but-
Because you get that in the gold.
What's that?
You get that in the gold.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not trying to sell anything.
No, 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 hey.
I mean, I have to look at these things too myself and-
Yeah, absolutely.
Figure out what-
The jail training is paramount with me right now, because we do have so many new officers. We were looking today, after our top three officers, everybody below in seniority has three years or less. So training, training, training is a focus for the jail right now, so that's kind of where I was focused in the jail, or the road. We do have a few new officers, but they get so much at the academy, and they're going to get so much from myself, and I have Detective Wason now to be able to impart his wisdom on them, so they'll get enough training from us. The jailers is really where I want to focus the training right now.
Julie, outside of these that you have listed here, during the rest of the year, do you foresee any additional things coming down the road that might be?
Yes, sir. There's a few things I'm researching right now. Tasers are going to have to be replaced at some point this year. The actual taser company is not going to support the tasers that we have after this year. There'll be no support from the company, so we are going to have to look into replacing them. I'm trying to break down on what we're actually going to need. This fund will pay for it. It's not taxpayer money. It will come out of that fund. And radios, and I've talked to Terry, and we've talked the last few days, what she may be able to help us with, but there is some huge communication issues in the county. There are spots where guys absolutely cannot get out. Alpine is one, some spots in Posey Township. It's dangerous, it's been that way for a while, and it scares me, and I want to get these guys, you know, the equipment they need, basic equipment, to be able to communicate. As you guys know, you've heard all that, they work one deputy at a time, the majority of the time, other than from AP to 2A. So she's trying to give me some figures on what she might be able to help us with. I probably will ask for those funds out of this eventually, but just trying to get my figures together before we do that.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve what he has here right now, because it looks like we've got plenty of money for this, these, what, three items? I think I'll make a motion going to, I don't know.
I don't think we need to do anything else.
Okay.
We don't?
Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't sure.
That's fine. I didn't- He can, he, this training thing, he can go ahead, send these guys, turn in a claim to the auditor's office, and it gets spent unappropriately.
Okay.
Like, like any other training for, that goes. I know that the auditor's going to have to have some people trained in her office, and all costs associated with that are spent unappropriately. So, you know, this, this is there for you to use, Sheriff.
Okay. Well, I didn't have a lot of direction. Sheriff Wason wasn't aware of it. Sheriff Jackson hadn't used it, so nobody really know, knew how to-
You'd be glad they weren't aware of it, they just kind of-
Yeah, there wouldn't be, no one would not be there, so, yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad it's there, so, and we do have the need for it, so. So I didn't have, didn't really know if it was something you guys had to approve, like I said. Statute says it doesn't have to be approved, but I wanted you guys to be aware of it, and I'll continue to bring stuff to you and let you guys know where we're going with things. If I, I have one last thing, if I may. I was informed last week that the Temporary Drug Task Force that is in place is going to continue for another 90 days. When they called and told me that, we had 166 inmates in our jail, and we're, we hold 114. So luckily, we are down to 150 today. We are working with DOC on getting a few others out, but I, I don't, and I don't want to speak too much to their tactics or what they're doing, but I don't see us getting another 60. But if that does present itself, we're going to have to look into some options. I've talked with Howard Williams, Sheriff's Association attorney. He gave me some options for me to take and for us to take in light of that happening, so just wanted you guys to be aware. Luckily, I was able to come in and say 150 instead of 166 or 175, because it's a bad problem for a first month as sheriff, but we're down to 150, and one was bonding out when I left over there, so.
That's kind of hard on your food program too, isn't it?
Yes, very hard. We don't have enough, we don't, she doesn't have enough room in the oven to cook for everybody. Judy, Dicky are cooks coming in at 2:00 in the morning now to get breakfast ready. Yeah, it is presenting some issues. We are, I have opened up the overtime in the jail. We're not going to work with less than four officers over there right now. Luckily, we've had a few of our senior officers leave with the new people, so we have, we have a little bit to play with there, but security is the issue, and, well, Sheriff, or Sheriff Jackson, Commissioner Jackson talked about, sorry, he hired me, I can't get that. But he, when he came in and talked to you guys about the security issue over there, without going into detail, that's one issue we have, the overcrowding's another. Radios are a problem. Guys can't get on the radio, so we're trying to do everything we can to make them safe, especially with the new officers just learning.
Would we told last year, everything's up to snuff? Pretty well. Over there?
We were.
Yeah, I thought we were.
What's that?
That everything was pretty well up to snuff.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Julie, let me ask you a question. What's your opinion of your, I see on these calls here on lockouts, the city doesn't do it. You think we should keep doing it unless it's an emergency, then we do it?
Um-
You don't have to answer that now, I mean, you-
I like them myself, because I think it's, it's something we provide that the city doesn't. It keeps the officers busy, it's a good interaction with the public. I understand there's other reasons maybe not to do them, but people are so thankful when we do them. It's a good service we provide. We probably- We probably average a few a night.
I see you got 100, I forget how many you had here, but you had quite a few.
Yeah. It seems like every time we listen to radio, we're doing one, but it's something we provide. I hear a lot of good feedback from the public. It's something I, at this time, I don't see us stopping, but it's...
Okay, what about VIN checks? Is that another, just another PR?
Uh, I wouldn't say PR. It's a good service to provide to public, so, yeah, I don't see us...
Police department does.
Change, yeah. But, I mean, we got a few guys out in the county that take cars and rebuild them, you know, and I mean, you usually hear a certain address, you go, oh, he's got another vehicle, so, I mean, they're thankful for doing it. I mean, it's something, I mean, everything's under review. You know, if it's something that doesn't make sense for us, we'll, we can always stop, but right now, I think we're good doing it.
I just, I wanted your opinion on that.
Yeah, definitely take it into consideration if things becomes a burden, so.
Does, then also, then we're talking about Judy at the jail and you've got three employees there as cooks, right?
Right, right.
Does Judy needing help since you've got so much over there?
I would definitely say Judy would say yes, but I don't, I don't know where, we need help all over the jail right now, so I would definitely think Judy probably could use some part-time help. That's something I can talk with her about in the morning and what, what hour she would need somebody and just, you know, kind of get something together for you guys and, yeah, it's, she's stressed, I mean...
I think, I think it's time to look into that situation because that's a serious problem with three cooks over there, working 365 days a year.
Absolutely, yeah.
And the hours that they're putting in, and I don't think they're turning any, I know they're probably not turning any overtime.
Yeah, I don't see those if they do, but I mean, she is, the day that Judy retires from the sheriff's department or from the kitchen at the jail, it's going to be a...
That's when we all need to resign.
...bad day for the sheriff, whoever it is, and the commissioner, so she does an excellent job, so, yeah, and if that's something, I'll talk with her in the morning, something that maybe we could figure out, that'd be wonderful, so.
Well, you better get your sheriff's apron then.
Yeah, yeah. They don't want me in the kitchen. I end up eating up. We got good food over there too, that's the bad thing, so.
We can tell.
All right. Any other questions?
Joey, you do know that a number of years ago, it was traditional that the sheriff's wife automatically worked at the jail?
Well, I'm...
Yeah, but she made money too.
She caused this. You do not want her cooking that too. She caused this. I was about 220 when we got married. I'm a little more than that now. All right, well, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Did you see what you weighed when we went through the tour?
No. Hush. I'm good in jail, thanks for jail.
Thanks, Joey. Next, our surveyor. We won't give you as hard of a time as we gave him.
Well, we'll talk about food.
The heaviest guy in councils giving Joey the hardest time.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense.
Well, I'm back with a 144 for a full-time secretary. The candidate that I picked last December, the appointment fell through, so I'm asking for a base salary, which is $16,747 for a candidate I've picked now.
Bill McDaniel's quit on you, or?
No, no. No, this was the replacement for John Valentine, who, who retired for health reasons. So, yeah, I've had like nine applicants and I've interviewed six people. So, hopefully, this, this lady I picked will satisfy the demands of the surveyor's office.
Do you have, still have an assistant down there?
Uh, Bill Mackey's the draftsman.
Yeah, well, Bill.
And basically, he takes care of the GIS issues that we have down there, updating and we've still got a lot from the beginning. He's very good at that and I appreciate keeping him, hopefully.
Okay, Warren, did you turn in a 144 to the auditor? You got it with you?
I'll move to approve the request of 144 for the surveyor's office.
We have a motion to approve the 144 for the surveyor's office. Do we have a second? Counsel, do we have a motion to approve the 144?
I made the motion to approve.
I know, I'll wait for a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Give a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Five ayes, one nay. Make sure you sign under the correct, the motion carries. Please make sure you sign under the appropriate box there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This is...
Next comes the exciting part, if you're sleeping, wake up. On our starting salary, during our budget meetings, we discussed a $500 pay raise for all full-time and all part-time employees. In doing so, in my opinion, that we overlooked the starting salary that was never addressed, and I believe my thought was, the intent of the council was to address that issue as well, to kind of get them in line. Now, it doesn't really impact us because if, say, somebody's current wage is $20,000 a year and the starting wage is $16,000, and we give them that $500 increase for their starting wage, when that person leaves, retires, moves on, takes another job, it's a benefit to the county of $3,500 that county will be saving. So, we're really not seeing any, any difference. We've already granted the $500 pay raise for 2015 for all full, for full or part-time employees. I believe we need to address the starting salary to reflect that increase. Now, we've already approved it. Without it, this would be an amendment to that. You would also include the full-time, the part-time people as well. Now, it was discussed that it would be a 24 cent an hour pay increase that was based upon the highway department, but their numbers, they work 40 hours a week, they're full-time, so that's where that number came from, the 24 cents an hour. Our part-time employees, the most they can work is 28 hours a week. So, if you did it at 24 cents an hour, it wouldn't be fair to our part-time employees. They would never receive the full pay raise that we discussed in our budget meetings. So, I've asked that we adjust the pay rate to reflect 34 cents an hour, which would be equal to what the highway department is currently getting on their pay raise, the $500. So, there's some employees that will work less than 28 hours. We, we can't necessarily go through and manage all that. That'd be a headache for, for Kathy to have to manage all of these different ones. So, 28 hours is what was decided upon. It didn't include the sheriffs, the road deputies, because their pay raise was already put into effect, that was already done. It didn't affect situations like some of the stipends that different departments get or the bonuses that were for 9/11, for meeting certain training criteria, didn't, didn't impact that. It was strictly base salary of people coming in. And I believe it only impacts maybe two employees at this current time. One of them's in the Supreme Court, one of them is in the auditor's office. The other thing that I came to learn was, I don't know if there was any verbiage in this, but people couldn't get this bonus or this pay, the starting wage increase unless they were employed by January 1st of this year. Well, the courthouse is closed on January 1st, it's a holiday, so they would automatically be eliminated from that, which is not right. They should be able to get it anytime it's started, it should be in the starting wage agreement. So, I hope that that made sense.
What are you saying about January 1st now?
Well, it was brought up to me that in, in the case of one of your employees that you just hired started after January 1st. There was another employee that started January 2nd. The understanding was that if that employee did not start on January 1st, that they were not entitled to the pay raise. Well, they can't start January 1st because we're closed.
Courthouse closed.
So, that makes no sense. So, you're punishing somebody for something that they have no control over. So, it should just be, that's the starting wage. If you come in December 30th, that's your wage. It shouldn't be a stipulation upon what date you start. It should just be, that's the starting wage. That was my understanding when we were talking about this. That was, that was my intent when I was, we were discussing this during the budget hearings, was that this pay raise would cross over not only to current employees, but any future employees as well. Again, it's not, the county isn't going to see a negative hit for this because this is simply a starting wage. Everybody that we have is probably, with the exception of a few people, are already more than what the starting wage is because of longevity or seniority here. So, it's actually going to go down, up on our general fund. But if we don't address our starting wages, we will never be able to catch up to some of our neighboring counties and we will continue to lose people. We will have a hard time trying to attract good employees. And in the grand scheme of things, $500 is nothing, is nothing for, for these people. I mean, we're talking, they might be able to afford a gallon, extra gallon of milk that week or something when you break it out in the course of a year. But I think it shows us an initiative or a good step on our part in the right, in the right direction to trying to get that, those wages where they need to be. I mean, it's really sad looking at some of these wages here and what some of these employees bring home and the fact that some of them are working two and three jobs just to make ends meet, which is time away from their family, their kids, things that they could be doing with each other, I think is valuable.
That's the thing that, that is, is going to be, the starting wage, I understand the starting wage, it needs to be, we never have brought it up, whether we give a $500 raise or whatever. Then we got to take in consideration of that, that you've got some taxing units that may not withstand that $500 raise. For instance, the health department, I don't know how, how they're, how they ended up at the year. But we, but the starting salary for them, and when we give the $500, we give it out of the general fund, but not to the taxing units. Now, did that $500 sell them over or what? I mean, does their budget, can they withstand that? The highway department has no problems withstanding because they're taxing you. Your health department, we got 911. I mean, and we, and really, I know we got to start someplace. We got to start someplace doing this. And this is what we've basically fought all along, trying to get this thing started.
I think the answer to your question with the health department again is, we're talking about a starting wage. We've already given them, we've already given them the $500 pay raise. That's, that's already in place.
Did their, their budget could withstand the $500 that we give, we guess?
Now, we're talking about starting salaries, so one of those health department people leave, then that goes down. So, that helps their budget from that standpoint. So, that's why I'm saying we're not really hurting...
If, as long as, as long as we're replacing a one with one.
Right.
If we ever put on a new one, then we got a problem.
If we put, oh, add a new person?
Yeah.
Yeah, then we, but we have to, we have to discuss that anyways during our budget hearings if that's something we can do.
Well, I think this was something that each, each ever person on the council agreed that there were going to be incidences or situations that you could not foresee when, I'll give you an example, when we wrote the letter at the end of 2013, what would entail being able to qualify for the bonus situation and that you couldn't foresee all of the situations that somebody might or might not qualify. We tried to go with the majority of the people, that they would in fact be eligible. So, I, I think, just like, you know, Russ has said, there's, there have been situations that we wanted to address with the committee and just have not had, had the time to do that, but I believe that this is part of that effort to...
See, and I have, I have a problem with, with this, I mean, I don't have a problem trying to get these salaries straightened out, don't get me wrong, but when, we're going to give a starting salary of $500 and we've got a girl that's been here 15 years and she's making $300 more, now how do we justify that?
Well, I mean...
We can't, we, we got to do something there.
It's, it's no different than when, if you worked at McDonald's 15 years ago, the minimum wage was, I don't know, sort of pull a number, $5 an hour, now it's eight, something?
725.
725 an hour. I mean, I don't begrudge that person...
Yeah, but the person, the person, then we get that, get that raise in between there to a certain percentage wise.
Right. I mean, I'm not going to begrudge somebody because this is the way it's set up. We can't, we can't fix everything, but we have to start...
So, you want to, you want to fix the starting salaries?
Fix the starting salary. We've already fixed the, the current employers.
Yeah, employees.
But we haven't, we haven't ever addressed the starting salaries, which we have to do.
Okay. So, all, every, so every starting salary we got, we want to give them, start off $500 more, is that what, is that what you're saying?
Right, but it's not going to, it's not going to impact anything because...
Just on paper?
Just on paper. But in actuality, when somebody leaves, that person was most likely making more.
Yes.
And so, it's going to be starting at quite a bit less. Right. Yes. At some point...
That was partially, in that what your committee now surely is, that's what we were partially trying to get, that's what we were trying to get last year, or else we never could reach some kind of agreement on how to do it.
I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem giving the starting salary, starting salary at 500.
So, so when we laid out the salaries and determined who belonged in which category, that was again, all the way, trying to get to that point where we could treat employees fairly in spite of the fact that some of them worked 40 hours a week and some of them worked 32 and a half or 33 and a half hours, some of them had to be on call 24/7/365 and others had the luxury of only having to come in and work four and a half days a week. So, you know, again, this is what, the tool we have to use and laying it all out in front of the committee, I think we've started towards that. But I agree, you know, and I believe on the council, we've all benefited, the county has benefited from turnover of people and hiring new ones in their place. And again, they started at a much lower starting salary and the taxpayers, I guess, have all benefited. So, for the most part, they're still going to benefit, it'd just be $500 higher for that one position that might and might not even, I mean, turnover, employee turnover is, is never something you can predict, other than it's going to happen.
I, I know you don't mean it this way. The, the benefit is a double-edged sword. It helps the coffers of the, of the county, but we're losing good people.
Or losing good people.
Which is not a good thing.
Well, but some people were...
But they have to make, they have to...
And look forward to retiring, you know, for many years.
Yeah, so it's kind of a double-edged sword. But, so that's the full-time, does everybody understand what I was saying about the part-time? That make sense? Okay, so...
Part-time now, I understand the full-time, let me get, let me hear the part-time.
The part-time was actually, was calculated at 28, 24 cents an hour, which is, was comparable to what the highway department was getting. What wasn't comparable is the amount of hours that can be worked. The highway department, those are full-time people because they're hourly, that they can work 40 hours a week. Our part-time people, because of what the commissioners have put in place, the most they can work is 28 hours a week. So, that wasn't a fair comparison. They weren't truly getting the $500 pay raise. So, 34 cents was the number that would make it equal to what the highway department was getting. So, they're not getting any more. There's going to be some people that don't work 28 hours and we can't, we can't address each and every single situation because it's, it's going to be a nightmare for Kathy to maneuver through. So, I propose that we adjust the starting salary to be an additional 34 cents an hour to what is currently in place rather than the 24 cents, that way they get it. Because if a person worked 20 hours, then they only get 250 of that. Again, it's, it's not much, but again, I think it shows that we're, we're trying to take into consideration their situation. I wish it could be more, but we have to be able to sustain it.
Well, and again, when you talk about sustaining and you want to be able to, when you have to hire a new employee, you want to be able to get the best person that you can possibly hire, one that has the education and training and what have you. And if you don't keep up with that starting salary somewhat, I mean, you're the example of hiring the supervisor for the highway. You know, how many applicants are you going to get based on outdated starting salaries or starting salaries that haven't changed since, you know, the last 10... Or starting salaries that haven't changed since, you know, the last 10, 12 years?
I mean, you look at these, there's very, there's very few salaries that crack $20,000, I mean, cracked the $20,000 threshold, the ceiling. That's, that's just, that's bad. So, does anybody have more questions for me?
I don't have any problem with the $500 starting, because again, you know, you're, it's not going to hurt the budget because we're obviously going down in salary.
Right.
It'll come down. I still, I, I don't really have a good feel about the part time at this point.
Well, in our discussions, we agreed to give everybody a pay raise across the board, both full and part time. But the year before, we only gave it full time. So that's why I think we need to address them as well.
Yeah, it probably needs to be addressed, there's no doubt.
And that's part of the committee's work. But, and a, a good example was that, was in particular, that part time folks at the community corrections, and that Michelle came to see the commissioners on more than one occasion, several occasions. I think it had to, it began when the hospital opened up their new medical facility at the north end of town, and they were offering a higher wage than what the prevailing wage was at the community corrections or the other part timed law enforcement or community correction center. And every, every week, she would lose more people. And it was, there were not enough people signing on to the, what, what is it that, that you go to look for a job, to fill those positions. She couldn't fill the positions as fast as they were leaving. And in essence, part of the discussion was, does she hire a new full time or does she hire a part time? And in fact, it was really better for everyone around was to raise the salary for the part time.
She's paid out of a different system.
She is paid out of a different system, but the same principle applies.
Yeah, but we've got a general fund that we've got to watch out for.
Understood.
And she's got whatever.
Understood. But I ask you to understand, and you're on the committee, so you do understand.
I understand.
That training new people day in and day out, there is a tremendous expense associated with that.
I totally, I know that. I've, I managed it a long time, Shirley, and I, I understand that. I understand that program.
I mean, it's not...
That was just an example of the part time.
Let's not fool ourselves and think that this is going to suddenly open the doors to all kinds of people wanting to work here. We, we know it's not going to happen, but, but it's, it's starting to move in the right direction is, is all it is at this point.
I've got a couple of questions and comments, Mr. President.
I'm surprised.
Well, okay. I, I didn't see this proposed amended salary ordinance until this afternoon. So I went back home and got the one we had approved earlier, or the one we had approved in 2014. And I went over it kind of quickly. And, let's see. I noticed the, the salary, the starting salary for the animal shelter supervisor. If you compare the one we have already approved to the one that's proposed, that salary raises by $4,875, not $500. Is there a reason for that discrepancy? I mean, that, that's not a $500 increase, that's a $4,875.
What are you showing?
Animal shelter supervisor.
I don't know what you're showing here.
Twenty, what you're proposing is $26,500. The, the salary ordinance that we already have in place is $21,625. That's a difference of $4,875. Where'd that, where'd that come from?
Well, maybe that's the table.
Are, Mr. Strong, are you looking at the 2014-13 ordinance that was dated and signed by council on the 2nd of December?
2014-13, yes. The starting salary effective January 1, 2015.
The one she's looking at shows $26,000. I'll sign.
Two sets of books.
There you go.
Is that the actual copy we signed?
Yeah.
It's the copy I received from our payroll board.
Okay. I won't dispute that says what it says. I don't recall us moving that salary that much.
You don't recall what?
I don't recall us increasing that salary that much.
No, I don't recall. And so to, I don't want to interrupt your questions, but I was going to state that before we act on this, there's, there's no new hires requested right this moment that the decision would, would affect, but would like to have the opportunity to get the wage and salary committee together to review this overall for just a, a recommendation and a comparison.
Didn't we talk about adjusting that starting salary?
He wants table.
Because Ann was going to be retiring.
Table it to allow...
I mean, of course, we did because...
I'd say that's what we did.
Because, like Dale said, I mean, Dale had an opportunity to pick it up and take it and go home and look. I wasn't aware of it, so I haven't looked at it.
Well, just because we signed it doesn't, doesn't mean that that's what we approved. We need to see where it was prior to that.
The one we approved was what, how much now?
Well, that was for Ann, and she was 30, the one we approved was 31,875. Because she'd been here for a while, so...
Oh, we're talking about the starting salary.
And I think we talked about the starting salary for the, because she knew she was going to retire.
Yeah, the one we approved, what, what's, what's it say?
$26,000.
And then the one you got is 21.
The one you got, Dale, is 21?
Because I think that's what we talked about.
I'm not too sure. We didn't talk about that. I really don't.
Well, I'm not trying to wreck the train here, but I just wanted to get these questions...
Is that the only one?
No, no, it's not the only one.
I was asking.
Um...
Calm down, Dale.
I think we need to get the minutes to... Now, hasn't, wasn't, hasn't been established. It wasn't established in 2014 that the community corrections board set salaries over there now.
Yep.
Okay, so, and to amend this ordinance, the way it's presented is taking the authority away from the community corrections board.
Yeah, that's a...
Well, and as...
So that, that group shouldn't even be in here.
Debbie called out, but basically, there's two separate statutes that come into play. One set says that the community corrections sets the, you know, the board, the advisory board sets the salaries. And I believe the DLGF state that we still have to have the 144s to be approved annually with the rest of the county wages. And so there, there is, you know...
They set the salary, but we have to further prove it.
We have to prove it.
Yes, that makes sense. So...
But we should...
But that, you know, it, because of that situation, that relationship between that advisory board over there and us, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that that group would be included in this.
I would agree.
Now, also, like the, the local health grant, and the, I think the community corrections grant also, Diana Wright does all the grant work for them. And I know part of her grant writing, annual grant writing process that she's involved in right now, maybe finished with, she has to know the exact pay rate for every employee because that has to be entered into the grant application. And she just asked me here recently what the, what the hourly rate was going to be for part timers, and I, I told her to increase those salaries by 24 percent because that was, that's what we had approved. And she said she needed that number for grant applications.
But why does she need to outwin she, if she's doing the grant now, would she just plug what it is now, not what it's going to be, but what it is now when she's doing the grant?
I don't know what stage of the grant process she's in, Mark, because, like I said, I didn't see this until this happened.
So you're, she took, you're talking for current employees, right? For what you, for what you were giving her, the information you were giving her?
Yeah.
Well, we're not talking about changing that.
We're not talking, we're talking about future.
Talking about, talking about new hires, which...
Yeah.
That's a whole nother thing that probably should be addressed, but I'm not going down that road right now.
Right.
So that's, that's not even on the table for discussion right now. So what you told her is correct?
That would be correct, yeah.
That's something the wage committee's going to have to figure out.
We haven't approved that yet, so she has to just go by what's in effect right now.
And another thing for the community corrections, that grant had to be submitted several, I think before the end of November, before the end of December, that grant was submitted. But basically, that grant was to become effective July 1st. So that wouldn't be...
Their, their grant cycle begins and ends in the middle of the year.
That's right. So that's just another piece of this entire salary and wage puzzle.
So if we do this, that wouldn't really go into effect till then?
I think we have to table this right now because Dale's pointed out some things that need to get addressed.
We need to check, yeah, those things that looks like...
I, I think when we go back in the notes, we're going to discover that we did talk about Ann retiring and the pay that that person was getting, would be getting and adjusting it. So I'm pretty sure we did adjust that. But you've brought us some other very good points in there that, that were not caught. So I think we need to address those.
Yes, but I remember that discussion.
I, I, I'm not trying to be hard to get along with or deal with...
Oh, you're doing alright there.
Yeah, you are. Well, you're doing a good job.
Well, making us believe it.
I, I, I want us to be really careful here, and whatever we do, do it right.
I agree.
I agree with you.
That's why I think we are investigating a couple of things, and let, let this committee kind of look into it a little bit.
I would really like to see your committee come with a, a recommendation that takes care of every...
Oh, yeah.
Every, every detail that, that we need to watch out for.
So surely, if you're taking notes, to give you an assignment, that would be to not only address the part time pay, but base it on 28 hours, not the 40 hours that we've done. And the 40 hours would be strictly for the highway department or any department that is hourly that's full time. And we also need to look at what we did for the raises too, because in effect, we gave them 24 cents, and that was not correct. It should have been based on the 28 hours. And we need to look at what Councilman Strong brought up here for the starting wage for the director of the animal shelter, make sure that's correct. And then like the, he said, the corrections, make sure that that's right. Because like Dale said, we, we don't want to keep redoing this every month and fixing it. We should, we made some mistakes or some oversights, things that we didn't necessarily think through, and we need to get those addressed in the wage committee and make those recommendations to the council.
If the commissioners are looking into the handbook, they also need to look into that, about that January the 1st. Put that in...
We didn't find anything.
Wasn't nothing in the handbook?
We didn't find any. I think you were looking too, weren't you, Carter?
Yeah, it doesn't say anything specifically.
We, we couldn't find anything.
Couldn't find nothing in the handbook, right?
It was just kind of one of those things, that this is the way it's always been. Which, I hear a lot of that. That doesn't mean it's the right way to do it, so. But if it, if there is some verbiage, I mean, I'll, I'll mention that to Frank, that if there's verbiage in there in the handbook, then we need to eliminate that because it's not fair to somebody who starts on the 2nd, or any other point in here. So...
Now, starting, starting January the 2nd, now, the 24 cents is in, in effect?
That's in effect, but it really should have been probably 34 cents. I'm not going to overlook a whole, you know, five cans of worms here, but I think we need to talk about that too. And if we have to make that retroactive, then we have to do it, because that was our attempt, was to give them that. We've not given them a full 500 pay rate, you know, 500 raise. We haven't done it. And it wasn't, it wasn't deliberate, but we didn't, we took into consideration the highway department at 40 hours and 20 percent, and made it the same across the board we should now. So I'm sure our viewing public will be quite confused after tonight. Sorry.
But did you have other questions, Dale? I mean, that might...
Well, no, I don't want to muddy up the water anymore than, than it already is tonight, Shirley, but I, I, do we all agree that we need to take a, a longer look at this?
Yes.
We should take it.
I agree, because we can't sign them once you're...
Okay, I'll, I'll move that we table, consider ordinance, consideration of ordinance number 2015, oh, three and oh, four, until later date, and give the committee time to work on it.
Can we do this by our next meeting? Can the committee kind of come to some kind of an agreement on this? Because it is affecting people.
Shirley's pretty good at that. I've been, I've been two and a half years trying to get it, but Shirley get it, she can get it next month.
Well, we have, we have met, but just not to address each of all of these. We've addressed many things as we've gone along, but we could set a, a date this evening because I believe it needs to be announced, so we can look at the calendar and...
I think we need to, because it'll be a little bit more sense of urgency then.
Yep. Second. You made a motion, right?
Yes.
Motion seconded. All those in favor of table in the proposed salary ordinance amendments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs, and motion carries.
Advertize it.
Get it advertised, Shirley.
So what about Tuesday, February 17th? That's in two weeks.
Sounds good.
Okay, patron concerns.
It's not good.
Did you wait all this time to...
I said, put it in the paper. I have...
So we have to. And we have to...
We'd just like to make the council aware of...
Could you please state your name?
Wayne Jackson.
Thank you.
I live in Holy Towne. I'd just like to make the council aware of a bill in the state senate, bill number 290, I believe it is.
CAFO?
Pardon me?
CAFO?
Uh, yes. It is taking some of the responsibility away from this council in governing our county. I think it would be advisable to, even though the council made decisions that I'm not in agreement with, I think it's important that we are able to govern our own county. And I think the council needs to make the senate aware of the issue that big government isn't what we need to do this. I think, you know, this council has made a lot of decisions lately, and like I said, I'm not in agreement with all of them, but I'm living in the county and I'll accept what your decisions are. So I think to keep control of the county, I think the council needs to make some sort of statement to the representatives in the state legislature. I thank you for hearing this, but I, I know it's your decision, so I still think...
Wayne, what is, uh, do you have any idea what, what one issue is, just a...
It's Gene Lacy's bill.
Gene Lacy's bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's wanting to...
And did you say that was senate bill, SB 290?
I believe it's 290, yes. Senate bill 290.
I've already contacted, and the representative...
What is it? What is it?
They want to take the local controls away from, from CAFOs. There's going to be a state, the state's going to come up with the rules and regulations, and the county cannot override.
For what?
CAFOs.
Oh, CAFOs.
It isn't just CAFO.
They're drawing a state's...
It is not just CAFOs.
Yes, you're right.
It is many of the zoning decisions that are currently being made, county by county by county, are basically being made without the same understanding or the same level of knowledge.
And this one, she's needing a license bill?
As the state is doing. And she, it's my understanding that she has put that back to committee for further study, if I'm not...
I, I haven't been tracking it, but I do know it has been, it has been made to committee, I think, so far.
Yeah, so they're going to talk about it in their November meeting. Yeah, so they're going to talk about it in their November meeting.
And certainly the idea, I mean, constitutionally, it goes against what we're wanting, you know, greater control at the local level. It's opposite that, so...
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Mr. Jackson, I'd like to, I'd like to say and go on record, I agree with you that I would rather make our decisions for ourselves locally rather than have the state make them for us.
Thank you.
I've got a question for you. Did you tell the top submissions that you ought to have them make them aware?
Well, I couldn't make the commissioners' meeting today.
They talked about it this morning. They're aware of it.
Did they vote on anything this morning? Because there was a recommendation.
No. I've talked about it and it stems from, we are cited in that SB 290, that bill as being one of the counties that's the most restrictive for CAFOs. And Mark and I have talked about it a little bit and I agree that we should have local control, but I think the state is seeing is that some counties have made it so restrictive for CAFOs that it just doesn't work. Like our county is one of them. So they're trying to make it more friendly across the board, but...
Well, it's my understanding that if there were to be a revision to the ordinance, that it would be approved by the commissioners and it would not come to council. Is that...
Right. We have nothing to do with it.
We're not, yeah. But what he's saying is he's asking us that we should as a body let them know how we feel, even though we don't have the final say in the county, but let them know how we feel.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If that's it, maybe we want to talk about the Super Bowl or you want to adjourn?
I'll look.
I don't care. I could care, I could care.
I'll move adjourn.
We got all paperwork signed yet?
No, there's minutes.
As per the Mark Shawn rule, no one can leave the room until all...
It's a good idea that it might keep you out of trouble.
I don't know. Justin's on overtime back here now, so maybe it'll make him a little extra amount.
He'd get that 34 cent raise.
Do I have one more?
Did you give him a raise?
No.
Okay. He's not all...
Later did though, probably.
So we haven't closed the meeting. This, this, here one right here and this full time secretary would basically be one of the positions that would be addressed.
Right.
Yes, that would be true.
In this, so...
So we just have to make...
We'll have to...
They're retroactive.
We have to retroact once we make that decision.
While we're signing, a question of Chris.
Chris, councilwoman White has a question for you.
Chris, we're going to try to get the committee together, the wage and salary committee, but could you do some research on the two different statutes that govern the community corrections, for instance? And I can give you that particular information, but I'm not sure, that statute number, et cetera, I'm not sure about the others. So that you could have a reading and help explain to first the committee and then maybe the rest of the council, the differences between who has, who has...
Authority.
The authority to make that versus approving a different...
Do you have their codesites?
Pardon?
Do you have the sites for those?
I don't have it with me at this moment, but I will get it with, get it if you could put that on your, so that we could have that information while we're looking into it.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
This is all finished this morning.
Shirley, are you on that advisory board over there now? Oh, no.
Yes, I am.
So we have a motion on the floor to adjourn. We have a second. Has everybody signed everything? Wait on flaw. We can't leave yet, Councilman, because we haven't signed everything according to...
Well, Shirley, she can't, she keeps going.
I'm sorry, I can't sign and talk to them.
All those in favor say aye. We're adjourned.
He's the...